Okay, we're gonna get started. Everybody ready? I'd like to call and order the meeting of the Newburyport Public Schools School Committee for Tuesday, September 8th. Would Mrs. Kennedy please call the roll?
Mr. Callahan.
Here.
Mr. Reardon.
Here.
Mayor Holliday.
Present.
Mr. Menon.
Here.
Mr. Poppeiser.
Here.
Ms. Spalding.
Here.
And Mr. Cole.
Here.
Please stand to say pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And I understand Mr. Cole would like a moment to offer a few words.
Thank you, Mayor Holliday. I respectfully ask for a few moments to remember Mr. William Gerzak Sr., who passed away on August 30th at the Leahy Clinic in Burlington at age 78. Born in Newburyport, Bill was raised and educated here, a member of the NHS class of 61. He played football and was a member of the NHS record-setting relay track team. Bill served his country in the U.S. Army during the Vietnam era until his honorable discharge in 1965. Upon his return to Newburyport, he began a 32-year career with New England Telephone, last serving in the role of construction manager in the real estate department. Bill was very active in the community. He was a longtime member of the Newburyport City Council, serving for 10 years before he retired. While in the council, Bill served as chairman of public safety and chairman of the Committee of Public Education. During his tenure, Bill donated his entire city council salary to the Newburyport Boosters Club. Bill served as president and on the board of directors at the Newburyport Kiwanis Club and was my mentor at the club during that time. Bill was also a member of the Board of Directors at Opportunity Works, the Newburyport Knights of Columbus, and American Legion Post 150. Additionally, he started the Newburyport Adult Softball League with the well-attended and entertaining games played at Perkins Field. Bill helped form the first Babe Ruth Baseball League in this area and became a coach and president. Bill was also coach and president of the Kiwanis Little League, a coach for Kiwanis Senior League, as well as Pioneer League. Upon his retirement from the telephone company, Bill was a volunteer coach for Newburyport High School baseball and golf teams. Bill always believed in finding time for the kids. Bill's legacy continues from his devotion to family, our community, and to the youth of Newburyport. May we have a moment of silence for Bill Gerzak. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cole.
We have one item on the consent agenda that was held over from last time. We received copies of revised minutes. Have people had a chance to take a look at those, those 17 minutes? Do I have a motion to approve?
I had one addition to make. I emailed it to Sean. I had meant to email it to him last week. I apologize for that. But it was just a question that I had asked, that I had mentioned in our last meeting.
So...
So with that question added, I will make the motion to pass the minutes.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Sean. Discussion? All those in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion is to add the question that is in Sean's possession from Shirley.
Yes, it was, I asked about using the senior center.
Terrific. Mike, are we ready for public comment?
Not yet.
Should we break or should we? Why don't we talk about the school calendar? We're gonna, we'll come back to public comment as soon as we're able to get it up.
Mike's not gonna, so that's the issue right now. You know what? We can probably just, probably just run the beginning of this and we'll hear the audio from it.
Okay.
Is the meeting being broadcast or just not on?
Just in here.
If the meeting is being broadcast right now, I would have a problem with it.
Sean, did you want to talk about the calendar, about any changes that were made to it?
Yes, I think our last meeting, we were talking about professional development days, the early release for the first half of the year, how we were gonna utilize more time on learning and not utilize those half-days. And then the suggestion, because this is gonna be a fluid calendar year for everybody, to hold on to those if we need those for the second half of the year, and then have the school committee reevaluate in January after the break.
So, just, so how does the calendar look for October, November, and December?
For the what?
How does the calendar look for October, November, and December? Are those, those half-days are there or not?
No, they're not.
Okay.
So, it was the removal of the November early release, the removal of the December early release, and then the two full-day professional development in the beginning of the year. We're holding off on those because those were replaced by the commissioners' 10-day professional development before the start.
So do we have a, do we have a motion to amend the calendar, to remove the early-release days in November and December or something?
Can I just ask a...
They're on this.
Second?
Yes.
Second discussion? Yes, yes, can you?
I'm saying they're on the one.
They're on, they're on this one because I don't think at the last meeting we got to that.
Okay.
So that's our, so after the vote, we will, for our next school committee on the 21st, we'll have a new calendar.
Steve, do you have a question?
Well, I just wanted to clarify because, you know, we're not looking at that calendar. So I just wanted to clarify. So it looks like the October one was already taken off, but you're gonna take off Election Day?
Yes.
And then the 12th of December?
Correct.
Okay. That's all.
And we talked a little bit about trying to put Thursday, Friday cohorts in on the Tuesday before Thanksgiving and Christmas. If we figure out how to clean the buildings or Monday, Wednesday, I guess. But can we leave that open?
I think...
Because you're gonna have to deal, you're gonna have to find out how Steve's doing with the cleaning in the first place.
Correct. Yeah. I think that's, that's part of the, the fluid.
Okay.
Changes. And speaking with principals, they're looking to balance out days.
Okay.
So that would be something probably down the road that we would take a look at.
It's just that that one half misses a week of school.
Correct.
Twice, so.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, the only other thing that was brought to us with regards to calendar was people were, people were commenting last week about the reopening plan. And I think we heard a couple people say that the metrics were there that would push us from hybrid to remote, but that there was no discussion of going from, like, increasing the amount of kids. I don't even wanna say from hybrid to full attendance, but increasing the amount of kids. And so I don't know if that's a calendar question or a use-of-calender question, but I'm wondering if, if either, and personally, I would accept either one, if either you've already thought about that and had some ideas, or if maybe we could have some sort of a presentation at the next meeting about what that would look like.
Right. And I think, you know, for us, it was the focus on reopening, getting the metrics squared away, which we, which we've done. And now it's the other, just like you said, it's the other side of how are we gonna bring more students back? And I think we need time to do a feasibility study on what that would look like. The first piece is that Wednesday, right now, that's remote, you know, for the cleaning. But that's, that would be an opportunity, I think, to bring more students back.
Sean, in terms of getting a presentation, you know, I mean, Steve's idea was to have, sorry, Dave's idea was to have a presentation for the school committee. Do you think that that, we could have that conversation in one of our next meetings?
Absolutely. Yes.
And it doesn't have to be like, you know, Bill's and Will's.
Specific, right.
Just a discussion of ideas. You know, like, here's what we're thinking about, here's what needs to be in place, here's what we're doing now, and, you know, by the following date, we might be able to reassess.
Correct.
I think that's really what people would do.
Those conversations right now are in, in process, working with the building principals, Steve Burcombe, some of our medical professionals, on what that would look like. So there, there would be different pieces of that that we could definitely give an overview.
We'll add return metrics to the, to the next school committee. I expect to hear from the district on that. Any other discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously?
December, correct?
This is December.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify.
And I, and I think for, for all of us, this calendar is gonna be, you know, probably an ongoing conversation and adapting to what's in front of us, you know, with the virus, so.
Okay. Does it have a calendar through December? How close are we to? Mike, can we do it?
We're ready to try it.
Okay, we believe that the Zoom link is open. If this is, this is our period of public comment. I would ask people to give their name and their address. We, we have an expectation of civility. If, if that does not happen, we will shut it down. We would ask you to go within about two minutes as well. And this being public comment, it's not really a conversation. It's the opportunity for the school committee to hear from the community. So, we're ready. Is there somebody, is there, do you have a name? Can you tell us the name of the person?
Elizabeth Goulard.
Elizabeth Goulard?
Yep.
Okay, Elizabeth.
Uh, yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can.
Okay, great. Yeah, my name's Elizabeth Goulart. I live at 9 Mark One Lane in Newburyport. I have an eighth grader going into eighth grade at the NOC, and my son graduated a few years ago from the high school. I, I just wanted to talk a little bit about the resolution. I did read the drafts. I do like it. I think it's really strong, and I, I like how strong it is. I do understand that there's some question about what the powers of the school committee really have in some of those things, but I think, you know, as school committee members, you absolutely have the power to, to promote these things and to say that this is what we wanna see in our schools, this is what we want in our schools. The one thing I did notice that was missing from our resolution that was in the sort of example resolution is the words "Black Lives Matter." And I understand that that is a controversial thing to say. Believe me, I've been on Facebook correcting misinformation constantly about this. But the reality is, is that fighting racism is going to be controversial, and we need to commit to it. I don't like not including that. And I, I just wanna say too, that the most specific thing that I'm really hoping for is a change in curriculum, an addition to the curriculum that is going to be, you know, anti-racist and, and really diverse and really complete. And I feel like it needs to happen quickly. I, my, when my daughter was in first grade, they changed the math curriculum. And it happened in like two years, like completely. And as someone who loves the math curriculum, I know there's still a lot of controversy about the math curriculum now that she's even in eighth grade.
Elizabeth, can I ask you to, can I ask you to sort of sum up?
Yep. So the, the, the only other thing I wanna say is that I really think that as far as changing curriculum, you have to look at black-led curriculum. So Southern Poverty Law Center has some, we can't do it in a white vacuum. Angela Davis historically said historically, "When one looks at efforts to create reforms, they inevitably lead to more repression." We need to be careful that we are not creating new curriculum in a vacuum, but really looking at black-led curriculums. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Elizabeth. Is there another person?
No.
Hearing no more public comment. Moving to the resolution, conversation about the resolution. We have sort of three versions of resolution before us, and I sort of turn the conversation over to you guys to decide which, if any, of those versions you would like to adopt.
I like that caller, caller, like when I talk show. I liked her comment of adding the Black Lives Matter that's in the mask version. And even, I believe, one, Bruce's yours, the original, and the edits that Dave made, possibly. And again, like I said, on the very first day, I'll sign anything that's an anti-racism document. I, I just, I really wonder what's gonna happen if we put anything about hiring more diverse staff, and then if that doesn't happen, people coming to school committee meetings saying, "Hey, you haven't, you haven't done this," when literally we cannot do anything about it, other than saying to Sean, "Hey, Sean, you hire some more diverse staff, that'd be great." And being public about it, but we, we have so no control over that aspect. I just don't know if we can keep it in there for something that we don't have anything to do with. More than anything in the district is, is the staff issue, that we don't touch it, right? So I don't know how we get around that, that's all.
Yeah, and I think...
Because we want it in there, but we don't wanna say we are going to do X if we were forbidden by state law to deal with hiring and firing staff.
I think that, if I recall, I think that both drafts that we put together didn't talk about, they talked about making every effort to strategically recruit or to hire people. And I think we can make a commitment to, to being as creative and as aggressive as we can to hire. You're right, ultimately, we can't guarantee that we're gonna be able to hire a diverse staff, but we can guarantee we're gonna try and do that strategically. Shirley, do you wanna speak to the mask as, right, that you've offered?
Yes, I presented that hoping that we could pass a resolution. We seemed at an impasse with the one that was proposed, but I'm hoping we could, we could vote on one of the versions that you drafted. And I would be behind adding Black Lives Matter into that.
Other comments, thoughts?
My only hesitation in including Black Lives Matter is that the organization itself may be bigger than I realize, funding things, involving things, doing things. Like, I have absolutely no issue with the sentiment, but as soon as you say that we're supporting the organization, I think it takes, that's another level. If that makes sense. And I don't know that I know enough about the scope of the organization to say that I think the Newburyport schools are behind it.
Go ahead, Sean.
Sean, I'm looking at the mask one though, and, I mean, they're not capitalizing Black Lives Matter. I mean, I think they're using it as a phrase instead of an organization.
That's right.
In the mask.
A formulation that I've seen in other resolutions is "All lives matter," and, and we can't make all lives matter unless Black lives matter. And again, that doesn't refer to the organization, refers to the, the idea. But mask has it, we can plug it into ours.
Where did, I'm sorry, I don't even see it right now on the mask.
It's the very last one on the mask one.
All lives cannot matter until Black lives matter.
Until Black lives matter.
I like the way they write that.
Yeah, that's fine. It's not capitalized.
Yeah. Right.
So it's, it's not even, it's not standing in allegiance with, or alliance with, it's just a statement. I happen to like, to tell you the truth, of all this, I've come to like the simplicity of the mask resolution. I still struggle, I still really struggle with, with not, with us writing a resolution and not having the district leadership team sign onto it, because I think the places where it has the most teeth in hiring and curriculum choices, and even in some ways in pedagogy, in communication choices, in approaches to discipline and suspension, all of those things are kinda out of our purview. So we could say in one mass movement that we pushed the district to do their best with these things, but I'm still struggling. I mean, and that's, I think, where we left it in July at the retreat. Ms. Pick wanted to, had suggested that maybe the leadership team of the district talk more about this before they sign onto that. Because, yeah, I don't really know what else to say about that. I don't know if you know anything more about that, Sean, but...
Well, I think, I think a lot, I think there's been a lot of work the last couple years especially regarding race bias, racism. A lot of the questions that, that we've been receiving, we've been addressing even before the tragedy and of George Floyd. So, so with that being said, I think this resolution also ties into our core values and a lot of the work that we've already begun in Newburyport Public Schools. So I don't see this as like a, a big leap, but I think we were fully 100% moving in, in this direction and addressing a lot of these, a lot of these issues.
And again, as I said before, a resolution is not an action plan per se. It's not coal-directed. It's, it's a statement of what we believe as a school committee for our school district. And, you know, working with Sean and with Angela and other members of the leadership team, it certainly, I think we say, encourage, continue. And I, I like the, you know, the statements that we have put in bullets, and I'm, you know, I don't see a huge difference between David's and yours, Bruce. So I don't know if there's particular things that, that you would really like to hold on to in yours, Dave, that's missing out of the first one or vice versa.
I mean, it's just a lot of language, to tell you the truth, which is why I came to like the mask. But I mean, like, one of the things we changed is instead of including it in, including diverse authors in recommended readings, you would, you would include them in required readings. So instead of, I forget the verbs you just used.
Encourage.
Encouraged.
Continue.
I don't know why we can't use the word "expect" or "insist."
Because we don't have that level of control.
Well, so I guess, which is why I wanted the school leadership team to be part of this, because, you know, it's one thing to say that, you know, such and such a book or such and such a unit doesn't present the full picture. It's another thing to say that we're gonna start offering courses in, you know, modern identity politics as a, as an expectation that we're gonna have those things at the high school. That, you know, there's gonna be a class in, you know, photojournalism that covered how, you know, YouTube and phones and social media have changed the scope of racial politics in America. Those sorts of things that I think, and you're right, we could just say we, we don't like this and we'll move on from now. But I think at some point, I guess I'm saying it would make me happy if we were willing to take that next step and say this is what we are actively going to look into and actively create and actively ensure, not encourage. Because we've been encouraging these things all along. Right? I think I'd say, I mean, I've been on the committee only five years, but we've always encouraged inclusive curriculum. But to expect it to take the next step because of where we are now as a country, I think it's a bigger statement. But we don't have the, you know, we don't have the authority to say that, so.
But we do have authority over the superintendent. And as we said in reworking on his contract renewal, we could put pieces in there that we expect you to work on components of the resolution, you know, and we could identify what those are for this year. I mean, and there's a lot of things that, you know, the superintendent's already doing with his leadership team. And I think we just have to continue the dialogue and, and work in the next steps. And I think that bringing, you know, we have, the teachers have a lot on their plate right now in terms of moving forward, so come January, let's talk about. So what's happened? What did we, you know, introduce into the schools that, what type of trainings have happened, what type of, and, you know, we're gonna get training too. So I think we just begin incrementally, and if we get the teachers to sign on, then we, we modify the resolution and add the leadership team, you know, in terms of the teachers have agreed or the leadership team have agreed to. But I think there's a lot of good work and good language in this specific resolution, and I don't wanna go back to the simple one, because I, I think this one is much more descriptive and prescriptive of where we are with our school district.
That's fine. I could support Mr. Menon's under that, under that guise, because the one I, the one I drafted does, it makes those changes. It makes changes to include things like recommended curriculum and not recommend to required curriculum and, and those sorts of things that...
And I don't think we can quite do that yet, but we might be able to down the road once we get by in from the leadership team. So let's start with Bruce's, that would be my recommendation. Let's get it passed and signed, add that sentence that's so well-crafted in the Masco resolution in terms of, you know, Black lives matter.
I mean, that could be made part of the superintendent evaluation, too.
Yes, that's what you're saying. Yeah, I agree. I think we could absolutely do that in terms of setting up an objective for you this year.
So can I make the motion to pass Bruce's version of the anti-racist resolution with the amendment that is the last line of the mask resolution?
Black lives matter.
Yeah, all lives.
All lives matter.
I don't have it in front of me.
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, it passes. Sean, Leavitt's superintendent's report.
We're already there?
Wake up.
Because we've been meeting a lot, so.
Yes, we have been. All right. So I just wanted to, just, I did send out a communication out to our district, but, you know, over this weekend, we were made aware of a high school staff member that developed COVID, which was traced back to a social gathering in accordance with our CDC, DPH guidelines, and then also all the work we've done this summer with the district health and safety protocols. The employee's gonna remain quarantined for the 14 days. And then also, as a result of our contact tracing, there was another employee, school employee's been identified as the only close contact at the high school. And at this time, we have testing set up for staff ahead of time, and that's the antigen test, and that staff member has tested negative. So it's, you know, for us, it is encouraging that the safety protocols that we have in place with masks, the distancing, washing hands was very beneficial. The other piece is with the new guidelines, if a staff member is negative or positive, they still have to quarantine for the 14 days. So that was the new revision on August 20th that came out, so.
Sean, that would be the same, it would go the same for students, right?
Yes. So if you had, if it was a cohort of students, they would be quarantined for the 14 days. So that's, that's what happened over the weekend. I just wanna, you know, thank Kathy Rikio, Andy Wolf, and also Steve Burcombe. We were, the holiday weekend, were working around these circumstances. The custodian staff went in on the holiday weekend, and they did a thorough cleaning of the building, the high school and all the areas. They used the electromagnet sprayers and with that new cleaning product, the hypochlorous acid, sprayed all the high school. And overabundance of caution also went into the NOC auditorium and sprayed that in the Mullen NOC, all the entryways. The other precaution that we did this weekend is Steve Burcombe, for both schools, put the ventilation system on full capacity for over 48 hours once we were alerted to the positive case. So staff returned today in a safe building, and we had our work, you know, going on as usual. So I just wanna thank everybody and the response, you know, and this is something that's really, I think, important, and it's something that we'll probably be dealing with throughout the, throughout the school year. I'm hoping not, hoping this is the only scenario, but it, you know, if, if we have to deal with a positive case, we have the protocols in place. positive case, we have the protocols in place to deal with it. So just wanted to update everybody on that. Reopening of schools, our teachers have been working at the grade, within the grade-level teams as we spoke at our last meeting, and all the principals presented what the plans are going to go, going to look like. There's obviously a lot of specifics now that are in detail with specific times that the teachers are we communicating to their families, along with the building principals. There'll be a lot of information going out in the next two days to really give our parents and families and students a true overview of what their daily schedule is going to look like. Also, there's incorporated in that, there's going to be a lot of communication on meet-and-greets, technology pickups at each building, and what the first week is going to look like for all the schools. And as we were talking about, I think at the last school committee meeting, school committee member Callahan also mentioned about what Wednesday's going to look like for students, so it's going to be in the morning, it's going to be a lot of the live synchronous learning for the classes, and then for the second half, there's going to be the asynchronous and the follow-up. So students will have a full day of work throughout the day, which will be follow-up from the live lessons in the morning. The other piece that, you know, I'm really proud of, Lisa Alexander, Liz Kinsley, and Assistant Superintendent Pick, is the remote academy. Remember, this was really based on numbers and interest, and we really didn't have a lot of information until families made that decision. For our families, they're having the same type of a meet-and-greet. The first week, there's a information newsletter that's going to be going out, and it's very detailed. Thank Ms. Alexander for putting it together. I am heading over here, page one, got GMed in the copy machine, but I have the other pages, yeah. But I will send this out to the school committee. It's very detailed on what grade level, what supplies, what the curriculum's going to look like. So they've done a great job with that, that is still in process of ironing out the details, especially the special education side of it, and I know Nancy Quatch has been working really hard with her team, making sure we're providing the services for all the different learning modules that are out there. The other amazing piece of our administration is the ongoing hiring and the filling in, and also Nancy Lysick, who's here, because for every person we hire, every person that leaves for FMLA or the daycare, Nancy does all that paperwork and all that processing. So for that being said, we'll provide, I think, the school committee, we just have the update, but by the end of this week, we'll have the accurate numbers of the staffing for every building, and right now, we're in a good position, I think, for all the principals with all the replacements and all the staffing needs throughout the district. At each building level, they've done a great job, and we have a lot of, a lot of new staff here, but I feel by the end of the week, I'll put this as part of the Friday memo to give, give you a staffing update. But right now, we'll be in good shape to reopen schools at this point, so we're excited about that.
Sean, in your Friday memo, can you also give us the numbers of staff who have taken FMLA?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, and then Ms. Lysick, you have, you have those numbers, but we can give an update for Friday, correct?
Do I now or do you want it Friday?
Oh, we, if you, would you like to hear it now?
It's good, okay.
Friday's good. All right, great. The other piece that, you know, we're really, you know, I just, I can't think our council is enough. So we put together through Kathy Ricchio and our counselors throughout the district, the staff support for emotional health, and also put this in the Friday memo, because this really just came out. But this is just an opportunity for our professional staff that may be dealing, you know, with the stress of, you know, coming back to work, or stress of families. It just gives our teachers and support staff extra support to reach out. And Maggie Flaherty created this flyer, and, you know, this has been distributed to our staff for people during the school year that might need to talk to people with a lot of the changes that are happening. So I'm just really proud of our counselors. And the last piece that I wanted to give an update on is school choice, and we have the full 10 slots that we opened for school choice, going back and talking to, we have two families that are on the waiting list. And one of the families was in our system but moved over the summer. In talking to Principal Furlong, we have 162 sixth graders currently enrolled, and we only have two on the waiting list. And my recommendation would be, we have enough room for sixth grade to allow those two on the waiting list to enter, and then just, we'll not, you know, we'll freeze the school choice for grade six. But I wanted to bring it to the school committee before I made a decision with that.
Do it. Discussion. Do we, do you need a motion, or just?
We can always approve school choice. We can approve two additional seats in the grade six.
Second?
First school choice.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Callahan, discussion?
All right.
All those in favor?
Aye. You just made two families very happy. No, the other 2,300. No, I appreciate that, and, you know, we were checking with Principal Furlong, and she feels very confident that those two will be a great addition.
So it's very powerful that even in the middle of the pandemic, knowing that we are going to be toggling probably back and forth, the families still want to make the choice in, and it's great.
Yes, I, you know, I can't say enough, you know, it's, I think we've all been challenged here. This is, as everyone says, it's uncharted waters, and I think for the most part, you know, people have strong opinions, but I think eventually, I think we're all coming back together, and I think once our staff and the students are in school, we'll unite, and then we'll continue to work on the metrics of bringing more students back if, if the data shows that we can, so. But that's, that's all I have for our update, superintendent's update.
Does anybody have any additional questions for Sean?
I have a comment. I just would like to thank the superintendent and Ms. Lysick. I thought that, you know, you were essentially grilled for four hours on Thursday night on the school budget, and I can't thank you enough for, I thought you did an excellent job in terms of both of you working through, you know, multitude of questions and scenarios and concerns, and I thought you did an excellent job in terms of representing the school district through, you know, a difficult budget workshop, so I just wanted, you know, to say thank you very much for that.
You're welcome. Thank you. Have any of the subcommittees met since we last, met last week? There are no subcommittee reports.
Should we make it back to that this month?
Join it is scheduled for the next school committee.
21st, September 21st, yes.
Are you guys going to start meeting before the third, before the second meeting every month? Is that a thing, or just?
I think, I think-
I think I probably just set that date, I mean, typically, we don't meet that date, but, so I don't, I don't know. I'll check with them, though.
Okay. Yeah. See, I don't think it's a permanent change, that's not the feeling that I got from it.
Can I ask a question about the superintendent's evaluation? Are we, are other superintendents using the, you know, the state form that has been used before? Is that what people have been doing still in this environment?
I can find out, yes.
I just would like to know, because it seems that, given everything that's happened, that an abbreviated evaluation form might be in the best interest of all of us as we go forward, as opposed to the, I don't know, 18-page evaluation that we had previously been doing, that we just have to bring Nick back to organize all this information.
And what I'll do for the committee members, because I know, I mean, you have the Friday memo, so that's, you know, a lot of information, but what I'll do is I'll, from listening to everybody, make the process a little bit easier, I'll develop a Google Classroom where I can put, archive different types of evidence that ties directly to the superintendent evaluation, so you're not having to look through a lot of information. You'll have it systematically right there for you.
Thank you, that would be quite helpful.
Because something we had set up as a goal wasn't so much about getting this year done, which obviously is important, but coming up with a system to start tracking that information as the year goes on, so nobody is, nobody's stuck looking for it in June.
So I think that could be, you're right, could be very helpful, because as we start going forward with this year, and we identify some, you know, goals and objectives, things come out in your Friday memo, then if you have a place where you can put that piece of data, then it becomes easier for us as we get to June to get this evaluation completed before the end of the school year, which would be really nice this year, so.
I guess I just need to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Second, Sheila, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
We stand adjourned, or we sit adjourned.